Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the annual town meeting. Just a few minutes ago, because the meeting was originally posted at the auditorium, Tom Clerk and I and a few of our close friends opened the meeting there and immediately adjourned it to here. So anybody who wants to get us on a technicality, nope, we've covered. We've opened the meeting there and adjourned it here. So I now reconvene the annual town meeting. First order of business, I would ask everyone to please join me in stand and recite the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Before we get started, I just want to go over a few of the rules that we'll be operating under this evening. Also, I want to tell you, we had two of our hard-working state representatives, Representative Steve Howard and Representative Jay Barrows, here this evening, but they had to run because there are apparently several other town meetings going on in the area, but they wanted you to know that they were here, and I wanted you to know that they were here. Can everybody hear me?
[laughter]
I've never had this problem before.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm trying without swallowing the microphone. Can people hear me now?
[inaudible]
I ask everyone to find a seat, which does, again, does not appear to be a major problem. Please try not to stand on the sides, it gets confusing. If you are a registered voter -- God, the echo is terrible here. If you are a registered voter in the town of Norton, you are invited to sit in the seats down here, or the seats over here marked for registered voters. If you are not a registered voter, you must sit in the seats marked for non-voters. If you are a registered voter, please do not sit in those seats, because when you raise your hand, your vote will not be counted, because they will assume you are a non-registered voter. If you wish to address this meeting tonight, you must do so only after being recognized by the moderator. There are microphones over there in the back, over there in the back, and there is one up here at the front. You may proceed to those and wait for me to recognize you. When speaking, please identify yourself by name and address, so the clerk can keep the record. Please try and keep your remarks brief, and keep them specifically to the article or the question that is being discussed. All speakers this evening will be treated with respect by the moderator and by everyone else. No speaker will be allowed to use the meeting for personal attacks on any individuals. All remarks will be directed towards the moderator. And while I will allow questions to be asked of individuals, I will not allow cross-examination types of discussions from the floor. It all goes through me. In recognizing people to speak, I will endeavor to call upon those who have not yet spoken before recognizing those who have already spoken. So if you've already spoken on a particular question, and the discussion keeps going, and now you're in line again, and it's your turn, and I pass you over and I take the person behind you, it's because that person has not spoken yet. It's not because I don't like you, or I'm punishing you, or anything else. We'll get back. We just try to let people who haven't spoken to the issue speak first. If a standing vote is required, you'll be instructed on what to do. It will involve standing. If we have to have a counted vote, you'll also be instructed on what to do. Very important tonight, if you wish to make an amendment to any motion, you must do so in writing, and come up and present it to the moderator and the town clerk. And when we get to -- if there are any amendments to the budget article, Article 10, then those amendments, I would ask, if you're going to make an amendment to add a dollar to one budget, and you want to take it away from another budget, I would ask you to do that in two separate motions, because the law has shown that you cannot require a town meeting to take away in order to add. Town meeting has the right to add without taking away if it so chooses. So if you want to make -- if you want to add a dollar to Budget A, and you want to take it from Budget B, please make a motion in writing that I want to add a dollar to Budget A, and that in my next motion, after this is acted upon, I will make another motion to take away a dollar from Budget B. And that's how we're going to work any amendments to the budget. Does everyone understand that part? Okay. Peter's right with us, we're good. I will remind you that a motion to reconsider will not be accepted on any article until at least three articles after that article have been acted upon. Of course, when we get to the last three articles in the warrant, that will not apply. I tell you this because if you wait, and article whatever is passed, and you're all happy, and you go home, and you leave everybody else here, and then four articles later, the article that you cared about is reconsidered, and instead of passing, it loses, and you read about it in the paper tomorrow, and then you call the moderator, and you're all upset, and the moderator says, "It's not my fault, it's your fault, you left." So just understand that that can happen, and you have to take your chances when you do that. There may be requests to allow non-voters to speak on certain articles tonight, that is a question that the meeting must decide. I remind you that there are often people who have important things to add to the discussion. By the same token, as has been proven in the past, there are people who don't. So we want to be careful. We certainly don't want to shut anybody out, but we want to make sure that the people we're going to listen who are non-voters have things, constructive things, to add to the discussion. That is about our situation for there. I will also add that we have a special town meeting -- oh, and the other thing, before the Notre Dame fight song plays again, can we just make sure everybody turns off their phones, and we don't have any buzzing of the phones? We have a special town meeting at 7:30. So at 7:30, we will stop with the article that we're under consideration, we will open the special town meeting, and we will take care of that, and at the conclusion of the special town meeting, we will go back to the annual town meeting. Madam Clerk, has there been a return on the warrant for the annual town meeting?
Mr. Moderator, Norton, Massachusetts. I have served this warrant by posting attested copies at Chartley Post Office, Norton Post Office, Norton Municipal Center, Norton Public Library, and three other public places within the limits of said town, seven days at least before the time of holding said meeting. Attest, Michael Mayer, Constable of Norton, dated May 4, 2018.
We'll now begin with the warrant. Article 2.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept and enter into contracts for the expenditure of any funds allotted or to be allotted by the Commonwealth or county for the construction, reconstruction, and improvement of town roads, and to see if the town will raise and appropriate and/or appropriate and/or transfer from available funds a sum of money for the purpose of road and other municipal improvements within the town of Norton, which are eligible for reimbursements, subject to conditions detailed by the Massachusetts Department of Transportation pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 90.
Okay. Can we -- is there anything we can do to boost the Chairman of the FinCom's microphone?
Is there -- can -- is this any better?
Can --
Lose the rope? Oh, that one's --
What?
Is that any better?
Let's --
Yeah, that's what --
Okay.
Is that better? Okay. All right, I'll quickly read it again. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept and enter into contracts for the expenditure of any funds allotted or to be allotted by the Commonwealth and/or county for the construction, reconstruction, and improvement of town roads, and to see if the town will raise and appropriate and/or appropriate and/or transfer from available funds a sum of money for the purpose of road and other municipal improvements within the town of Norton, which are eligible for reimbursement, subject to condition detailed by the Massachusetts Department of Transportation pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 90. This move is written in the warrant. This will authorize the Board of Selectmen and towns to accept $559,958 from the state for road and maintenance repair. This is also referred to as transportation funding, as noted in Chapter 90.
Are there any questions or discussion on Article 2? Seeing no hands, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of Article 2, please indicate by raising your hands. All those opposed. Article 2 passes by unanimous vote, is declared by the moderator. Article 3. Article 3. Article 3 is declared lost for lack of a motion by the moderator. Article 4.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire, by purchase, gift, or eminent domain, the fee of lesser interest in the parcels of land as depicted more or less on plans drafted by Vanasse Hangan, Brussels Inc., dated April 5, 2018, titled Massachusetts Department of Transportation, Highway Division, Plan and Profile of East Main Street, also known Route 123, in the town of Norton, Bristol County, 100 percent submitted on file in the office of the town clerk, together with such other parcels of land and interest here, there, and then as may be necessary to carry out the Route 123 corridor improvement project, which shall include providing full construction and roadway safety improvements, and obtaining a secure and public right-of-way incidental thereto, and further, that the town vote to transfer the amount of $70,000 from free cash to carry out such acquisitions, and to defray any associated expenses connected with this project, and to further, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to take such actions and execute instruments and other documents as may be needed to effectuate the purpose of this article. Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Chairman.
This is a request, $70,000 of free cash for a project that will begin in the spring of 2019. It will last two years, and it is really for property reconciliation or eminent domain.
Ladies and gentlemen, this involves, first of all, I will tell you that the motion is as printed in your warrant. It also -- it involves basically the acceptance of land and the taking of land for this project that's outlined. It seeks $70,000, which, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Chairman, that $70,000 is to cover any costs associated with taking the land?
Correct.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, you need to know that this article, because it involves the purchase of property, requires a two-thirds vote for passage. Does everybody understand what the article involves? Yes, sir.
I don't understand this at all. What do you mean, taking of land?
Okay, I'm going to ask someone to explain it. Is that fair enough? I don't know, Mr. Chairman, or Mr. -- oh, Mr. Town Manager will gladly explain it to us.
As everyone knows, we've been talking for a few years now. We're making roadway improvements on Route 123 from Pine Street to 495, and as part of that project, there'll have to be temporary easements taken during the construction, and also there'll be some permanent utility easements taken during the construction. So this will allow us to hire an appraiser. If people aren't willing to donate those parcels as they were on Plain Street for that project, this will allow us to hire an appraiser and compensate people for the parcels that are permanently taken.
Uh, I don't know.
Are there any other questions or discussion on Article 4? Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yeah, there's one up here, or there's one in the back?
So you said that the $70,000 is to compensate both the appraiser and, if anybody would like compensation for their land. If that estimate, the $70,000, is more than that which is needed to cover the costs, what happens to the funds that are left over?
Mr. Town Manager.
The funds would remain in the article until they are closed out to free cash, once the purpose of this, once the project's done.
Thank you.
Sir, can we get your name and address for the record? Thank you.
Edward Martin, 215 North Washington Street.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other discussion on Article 4? Yes. Oh, yes, sir, I'm sorry.
That's all right, I'm invisible. Joe Massey, 21 Young Avenue. You mentioned temporary. Are you going to give the land back? Are you paying for the land? So if you're paying for it, how can it be temporary, and are you giving it back? I'm just confused.
Mr. Town Manager.
During roadway construction, a lot of times, there's temporary easements for grading, or when they're working, they'll have to utilize that land for equipment, and then they give it back after that purpose is over.
There any other questions? And people, I ask, really, you put your hands up, because I'm usually up higher, now I'm level, so it's harder to see. Yes, ma'am, in the back.
Yes, Tracy Weiss at 56 Crane Street. I'm just trying to understand this project a little bit better. I understand about the industrial park that we want to put in north of 495, but this sounds like it's talking about south of 495 to Pine Street. Exactly what is that for? Because I know we're needing funds in this town for other things, so I'm trying to understand exactly how this money is serving our town.
We'll be reconstructing Main Street and sidewalks on both sides until you get to the sore easement or the hump. After that, there'll be a sidewalk on one side. There'll be bike lanes also put in during the project. There'll be a traffic signal at the intersection of North and South Washington, and as part of this project, but not funded by our portion of this, the state is putting traffic signals at the 495 off-ramps.
Yes, sir.
John Thurlow, 89 Burt Street. Is there any kind of map that identifies these parcels that are going to be affected?
Yes, as was said during the motion, this is on file in the town clerk's office.
But there's no representation that we can see tonight?
No, it's at the town clerk's office.
Are there any other questions or discussion on Article 4? Okay, I will remind you again, this requires a two-thirds majority vote for passage. Seeing no hands, all those in favor of Article 4, please raise your hands. All those opposed, raise your hands. Article 4 passes by a two-thirds majority vote, is declared by the moderator. Article 5.
Mr. Moderator, I move, as written in the warrant, that the town vote to transfer the amount of $135,000 from the funds appropriated in Article 12 of the October 23, 2017 town meeting, for the costs of engineering and designs of the new town hall, for a feasibility study for such purposes, and further to authorize the Board of Selectmen to take such action and execute such documents and agreements as are necessary to effectuate the purpose of this article, including contracts with terms in excess of three years. Mr. Moderator, this is a feasibility study, and the town manager could probably elaborate a little more on a new town hall.
Okay, Dave, Mr. Town Manager.
And as was said by the Chairman of the Finance Committee, I want to emphasize, if you look at the writing and look where the comma is, the original article set aside 1.5 million for engineering, design, and construction of a town hall and a senior center. Now this, at that meeting, there was a motion made to require us to come back during each phase of the project. So now we're coming back, seeking just for the feasibility, $135,000. This is a request of the Building Committee, who received many RFQs, requests for qualifications from companies that they were reviewing. Now, just anticipating some of the questions, because they came up at the Finance Committee and other places, why would we appropriate $135,000 for a feasibility study if we don't know what town hall is going to cost? Well, that's why we're doing a feasibility study, and similar to when we, before we did the high school project, we had a feasibility study. Last year, you appropriated $200,000 to do a feasibility study on a window project. And then later tonight, you're going to be asked to fund that. And this is the same thing. This will allow us to determine what locations are the most feasible for a town hall, and what the architects determine that a cost to construct a town hall will be. Once we have that, then later on, obviously, we'll come back to town meeting again, seeking funding for architectural design, engineering, and construction of a town hall. This will simply do the feasibility study to let us know what we'll be looking for.
Thank you. Are there any questions or discussion on Article 5? Yes, Dave.
David Heaney, 25 Fletcher Way. So recognizing that you do need to do the study to get the --
Can you please kind of talk close to that? Sorry about that. Is this better?
Yes, thank you. So recognizing that you need to do the full study to get the exact cost, do you have a rough idea, what do other towns look at when they do this kind of thing? What's that end cost, generally?
For a town hall?
Yeah.
I would say, and I'm only speculating, but I would say you're looking at anywhere from $10 to $12 million.
And so there's a million and a half in the fund now. Where does the rest of that come from if we decide to go forward?
That's something we'll have to decide at that time.
So is that, and I just don't know, is that meaning we'd have to do some kind of override or a debt exclusion, or is that, can we do that within the budget?
That, when we find out what the building is actually going to cost, then we'll have to determine whether it requires a debt exclusion, like the high school project did, or whether it doesn't.
Okay. And then if we vote this down, or anything else with regards to these funds that we set aside last year, and we wanted to use those funds for something else, what would we need to do to do that, the way that these are set up today?
That money was set aside in an article for a specific purpose, so I don't know whether --
I can tell you that any sum of money that's voted for a specific purpose in an article can only be used for that specific purpose. It remains in that account in perpetuity until it is either spent for that purpose, or there is a subsequent town meeting vote to do something else with it. But it cannot be spent for anything other than the purpose that it was voted for, or by a town meeting action transferred to something else.
Great. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Kathy Marinelli. I'm from Seven Greens Field Circle, and I noticed that the town hall has a new facade, or relatively new from the last few years, to match the police station. I'm just wondering, help me to understand why we need a new town hall, before we even vote on this. I'd like to know, is it in disrepair?
Have you been in the town hall?
Yeah. I have. I've also been in the Yale School.
The discussion goes through the moderator.
I've also been in the Yale School.
If you go into the town hall, I think it'll be pretty apparent when you first walk in. Maybe your first place you could go is to the Selectmen's Meeting Room, which is up on a stage, which people squeeze in with less room than you probably have in a jet airliner, to go to meetings to hear what the town's business is. Maybe you should look over to where Cable has their cameras set up, and they have an electric extension cord, like you would have at home, with many things plugged into it, totally unsafe.
I'm just wondering, why did they repress the front of the building?
Now, the town -- hold it. We'll speak one at a time, please. The town manager has the floor now, then we'll go back to you. Thank you.
Go upstairs to the Board of Health Office, where you have four employees working in practically a closet, totally unsafe, doesn't meet any building codes. We don't have a meeting room in the town hall, so if a resident comes in to talk about their taxes with the treasurer, they sit out in the hallway and talk to the treasurer. The building doesn't meet any guidelines at all. Those people are working in unsafe conditions, and it should be an embarrassment to the people of Norton to bring representatives to a Selectmen's meeting in that building.
Yes, ma'am.
My turn? Okay. I have been in the town hall, and I understand where you're coming from. My question is, why did they spend all the money refurbishing the whole front of the town hall? I feel like we're throwing all that away, when we have to beg for money to put paper in the schools.
I know I've been here since 2011, and there has been no refurbishing to the front of town hall. Mr. Kimball's been here longer, so maybe he can respond.
Since 2011?
Nothing personal against Mr. Kimball, but it is now 7:30, and I have no choice but to --
I'll answer your question in a minute.
-- take us to the special town meeting. When we come back to the annual, I'll come back to Mr. Kimball, and come back to the lady who's at the microphone, and we'll do that again. But right now, by law, I must go to the special town meeting.
I'll go with you.
No, we've done it. The special town meeting was called for 7:30 in the high school auditorium. In a blatant display of outright nepotism, I appointed my wife as deputy moderator, so that she could walk over at 7:30 to the town, to the auditorium, and open the town meeting, and we have opened it and adjourned it to here. So at this point now, I would open the special town meeting and declare the annual town meeting in recess until the conclusion of the special town meeting. And I will now turn to our clerk. Your special town meeting warrant, I believe, is at the back of the warrant that you have. And, excuse me, one second. Madam Clerk, has there been a return on the warrant for the special town meeting?
Mr. Moderator, Norton, Massachusetts. I have served this warrant by posting attested copies at Chartley Post Office, Norton Post Office, Norton Municipal Center, Norton Public Library, and three other public places within the limits of said town, seven days at least before the time of holding said meeting. Michael Mayer, Constable, Norton, May 4, 2018.
Thank you. We will now proceed to the warrant on the special town meeting. Article 1. Article 1. Article 1 is declared lost for lack of a motion by the moderator. Article 2.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Chairman.
I move, as written in the warrant, that the town vote to transfer in the amount of $7,900 from free cash to pay all outstanding separation expenses associated with the retirement of various employees from the town of Norton, and to authorize the town accountant in consultation with the town manager to allocate amounts to appropriate departments. Mr. Moderator, this -- Mr. Moderator, the $7,900 will be coming from free cash. It contains earned vacation buyback from a member of the police department who's retiring.
Are there any questions or discussion on Article 2? Seeing no hands? All those in favor of Article 2, please raise your hands. All those opposed? Article 2 is approved by unanimous vote, is declared by the moderator. Article 3.
Mr. Moderator, I move, as written in the warrant, that the town vote to amend the vote taken under Article 8 of the May 8, 2017 annual town meeting, by increasing appropriations for certain light items, and to do so by transferring the additional amount of $425,775 from free cash as follows. Account number 001-30570, School Department, out-of-district tuition and transportation Account number 001-423570, Snow removal expense, $134,400. Mr. Moderator, this article is for the current fiscal FY '18 year, and this amount is appropriated and will not exceed the town mandate of Proposition 2 and 1/2.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, so this article seeks to add money to the current existing town budget, not the one that you'll be voting on under Article 10 for next year, but the one that we are currently in. Are there any questions, comments, discussion on Article 3? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 3, please raise your hands. All those opposed? Article 3 passes by majority vote, is declared by the moderator. And I'm sorry, Article 3, let me do that again, because I failed to tell you, I believe that Article 3, no, wait a minute. It says two-thirds vote here. That doesn't require a two-thirds vote, counsel, right? So don't mind, we're good. Article 4. Article 4. Article 4 is declared lost for lack of a motion by the moderator. Article 5. Article 5. Article 5 is declared lost for lack of a motion by the moderator. Article 6. Article 6. Article 6 is declared lost for lack of a motion by the moderator. Article 7. Article 7 is declared lost for lack of a motion by the moderator. Article 8.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town will vote to appropriate the amount of $880,000 for the purpose of designing and constructing sewers, pump stations, enforced drains, land acquisition, and for related legal, administrative, and other pertinent expenses associated with the construction of public sewers required to serve the Woodland Meadows Development, Norton High School, and the Yale Elementary School, and other public and private properties on West Main Street, Taunton Avenue, Howard Street, and Fillmore Drive. Along the sewer alignment needed to serve these properties, including, without limitation, all costs thereof, as defined in Mass. General Laws, Chapter 29(c), Section 1, that such sum of money to be used to augment the $3,320,000 appropriated and approved for borrowing under Article 8 of the May 8, 2017 special town meeting, and further to authorize the funds appropriated under said Article 8, to be expended for the purpose set there for then. That to meet this additional appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectment, is authorized to borrow $880,000, and to issue bonds or notes thereafter, in accordance with General Laws, Chapter 44, General Law, Chapter 29(c), and any other enabling authority. That such bonds or notes shall be general obligations of the town unless the treasurer, with the approval of the Selectment, determines that they should be issued as limited obligations and may be secured by local system revenues, as defined in General Laws, Chapter 29(c), Section 1, that the Norton Water Sewer Commission be is authorized to apply for, accept, and expand any state and/or federal grants and loans for public or private funds that may be available for the project, that the Water and Sewer Commission be authorized to assess sewer amendments or privilege fees to recover at least 50%, but no more than 100% of the sewer project cost, authorized by this vote and Article 8 of the May 8, 2017 special town meeting, in accordance with Chapters 80, 83 of the Mass. General Laws, and the Town Sewer Department Rules and Regulations. That the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectment, is authorized to borrow all or portion of such amount from the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust, established pursuant to said Chapter 29(c) and in connection therewithin, to enter into a law agreement and/or security agreement with the trust and otherwise to contract with the, to contract with the trust and the Department of Environmental Protection with respect to such loan, and for any federal or state aid available for the project, and for financing thereof, for the Board of Water and Sewer Commission, is authorized to enter into a project regulatory agreement within the Department of Environmental Protection, to expend all available funds for the project in accordance with General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 20, authorize any premiums received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to payment of project cost approved therunder, thereby reducing by like amount the authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs.
Okay, now, despite the fact that that's obviously painfully clear to everyone in attendance, we're going to ask the water commissioners to explain exactly what that is, and perhaps show you. I will also tell you that this article requires borrowing on behalf of the town, so therefore it will require a two-thirds vote in order to pass. Mr. Grant, for the water commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Everyone can probably see the PowerPoint. Can everyone hear me okay? I don't know if we've used this before. This sewer main extension, or this article, is merely an increase to a prior article that has already been approved at last spring's town meeting for $3.3 million. What we're proposing is, this is the, the West Main Street sewer extension is the next planned phase of the sewer system in town. If you could proceed to the next slide. Oh, that's the one, sorry. Nope, sorry. You're ahead of me, thank you. This one, this sewer extension was driven by the Woodland Meadows Norton Housing Authority's property, which many of you, I'm sure, are aware, is in septic system failure. They have to pump all the time, much like you would pump your own septic tank. This is a very big parcel of land. They had to either make a choice, and go with either an on-site treatment plant, kind of like is out at the middle school, or come in and hook up to the municipal sewer. At this point, the best, the best direction is to go with a municipal sewer. Also involved, the Norton School Department. We have two schools that are having flow go out to the system, the on-site system at the middle school. The high school, this building, flow goes to the middle school, also the Yale School. Their flow goes to the middle school. That school system was designed only for the middle school. Since the two other schools have been added, their numbers, the required Department of Environmental Protection numbers for cleaning the effluent that goes into the ground have not been hit. We are not in DEP compliance at that location. If these two schools, the Yale and the high school, get connected to this sewer main extension, that onsite treatment plant at the middle school should be able to hit its target numbers again, and get back in DEP compliance. We, the Water and Sewer Commission, is only handling this article because, obviously, we are the sewer entity. This is, we moved this because of the request of the Woodland Meadows people. We don't, we don't want them to have a small onsite treatment plant, thus having a lot of little, small treatment plants everywhere. We want one cohesive sewer system for town. I've been through the septic problems at Woodland Meadows, that's the Norton Housing Authority, that's the name of that. What the state agency, the state agency that is operating the Woodland Meadows property, has committed to this property, this project, is nearly $1.4 million. It's 1,376, a million four, coming to us to assist in this permanent solution to our sewer needs. Obviously, the Band-Aid approach of the small treatment plant on their site, not only is an ongoing issue for them, they would have to maintain it over the years and years and years. If you think about it for a second, it takes up valuable property on their space, that they could build more units from for more capacity at their apartment complex. To the school department. I've already touched on the middle school treatment problems. The Mass. DEP has denied the connection of the housing authority to the middle school treatment plant. Initially, an easier solution was thought to be to put the housing authority in with the high school and the Yale at the already failing middle school treatment plant. Not the best plan for anybody. The school officials are obviously looking towards the extension of this sewer, connecting the Yale, connecting the high school, and heading that way. The reason we're here tonight, as I said in the beginning, is a, a year ago, we approved $3.32 million for this exact project. With the current test borings, we had crews out there, sampling the soil every so often, I think it was 300-foot increments, down to the depth of where we believe the sewer will go. The current project estimate, with our better knowledge of all the existing utilities, is $4.2 million. That's a shortfall of $880,000. The sewer extension would go from the newly-installed center treatment plant at Wheaton, or center pump station at Wheaton, out through the Norton Housing Authority at Woodland Meadows. That section of West Main Street. As I've already mentioned, our funding sources are the Norton Housing Authority, that is state money. It's state money. If we aren't able to move this tonight and get this successfully passed, I believe that money goes away, and they move towards building an onsite treatment plant. That's really not what we want. This money is available, and this project is very necessary. The second phase of the financing sources will be sewer beddements to the projects, to the properties along that length of West Main Street. These are beddements, we can stretch the payments out for 20 years, and make it less painful connect. I know at least five or six people have contacted me specifically, trying to see if this is going to move, if this sewer extension is going to happen, because their septic systems are in failure, and they want it. So, that's just in the past six months. Obviously, the schools are along the way, they will share in the expenses of it, and then we will have some borrowing through the Mass. State Revolving Fund. That money is available to us at a 2% rate. Crazy low, only for state municipal projects approved by the state. We have the secured state approval for that. Our fund, our interest rate will be 2% for the life of this loan. So we're here tonight, with your approval, to move this forward. As we proceed, the next target date would be the complete project design in July of '18. Once we have the complete design, we'll submit the SRF loan application to the Mass. DEP in August, end of the summer kinda. And with all that behind us, then we start construction in the fall. The sewer's construction will be completed next summer. Why approve this? It's $880,000. Everybody's got money going everywhere in this meeting, but, number one, a few years back, we did a comprehensive wastewater plan for the areas of town that would be sewed. This was the next leg of our plan. From the pump station at Wheaton, now this is the next one. Obviously, this helps to solve the Norton School problems, and the housing authority wastewater problems. I don't want to get too crazy on sewer effluent talk, but at those properties, especially the Woodland Meadows, the septic on-site is not functioning properly, the groundwater is in jeopardy of being contaminated, it's not a good situation. The soils are poor out there, it's a bad, bad thing. We have the housing authority commitment for the nearly $1.4 million. That is, that is a very, very good thing for this project. And as we connect more people to the sewer, the MFM, the treatment plant that's in our town, will be, the expenses will be shared among more users. So not only do we offer the service to more people, but the plant, whatever cost it is, gets spread out among more users. I think the only thing I didn't hit on was that the, if we do delay, we anticipate construction increases of 5% per year. That was part of the reason for the increase over the initial estimate. Every year we rate it, the price goes up a little bit, and as these projects become very costly, 5% of $4 million is quite a number. I think that's all I have, and in closing, the, I think the overage applies that if you build it, they will come. If there's no sewer in that section, we have all seen the Bank of America property sitting there vacant, I hate to see that. Not only is it a business, or a group of professionals in a building that we don't have access to, it's valuable property off the tax rolls. If we can get this approved, put the sewer main in, I will venture to say that it won't be too long before somebody shows up. If you make a commercial property put in a septic system in that poorly drained soil, they have to put it under their parking lot. It's very expensive, it's not permanent, it's not anywhere a real company with future visions wants to be. I think, I think we need this. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Any other discussion, or comments, or questions on Article 8? Yes, sir.
Paul Wanamaker, 217 Taunton Avenue. I'm no expert on the size of a project, but a 25% mismatch there from last year, what happened? That you need that much more?
Mr. Grant?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It's an excellent question. As, this is an older roadway, there were many utilities that were not known about in the roadway. Once those utilities were discovered and laid out, there was a very narrow path that the sewer could follow, and to get around some of those utilities, the sewer had to be deep. Some of this sewer section is 16 feet deep. As an excavator- As an excavation contractor myself, anything around 10 is okay, 12 is all right, 16 is pretty deep. It's very expensive to be that deep. And, secondly, from the test borings that you folks may have seen out there in West Main Street, they discovered at the depth that we have to be, there are, there is a significant amount of boulders or ledge in that area, and also, at that depth, it gets very expensive to remove the ledge.
Is this it? Will we be asked again to, for another increase on this, or is this it?
This is the best information we have at the time. I can't, I can't look into the future, I wish I could. The, the engineers have seen the test borings and the average of the rock and whatnot, and this, this is our best engineering estimate at this time.
Thank you. Any other discussion or questions on Article 8? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, thank you. Renee Delly, 69 South Washington Street. I just have a question in respect to the middle school treatment plant. Was there any due diligence in respect to improving that so that it can take both the high schools in the Woodland area as well as opposed to this option?
The problem is flow and size of that plant were specifically designed for that school in that place. It wasn't designed to handle other schools, it wasn't designed to handle Woodland Meadows. So, you'd have a large or mini treatment plant. Everybody feels it's storing money, good, good money after bad. It, it forces the continual maintenance and improvements to meet DEP requirements annually. There was somebody, an outside contractor, that has to go to that plant to try to make the numbers work with more flow than was initially designed. So, it's, we didn't, we didn't do any research on that because it's really, it's overloaded. We, we believe that when the high school and the Yale school get pulled off, as the middle school did hit its numbers before, we believe it will again, on its own, like it was designed.
Right, so I understand that, but I don't think you answered the question. So, the question is, did you look into improving that or making a bigger treatment plant as opposed to this option for the sewage?
Mr. Grant?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. What I kind of foresee for our town is soccer fields and baseball fields at schools, not treatment plants.
So, the answer is no?
It's, it's really not a viable option. You have, you would have to triple it, design, it's, the flow can't go there. This, this is not just for the schools, this would, this extension would connect every property along the entire way and get the sewer mains themselves that much further out into, maybe one day connecting Charlie, which is another poorly-drained area with bad soil, so. It's, I think something we should have is soccer fields, baseball fields at schools. Sewer treatment plants, not so much.
May I ask another question?
Yes.
So, in respect to the properties along that you mentioned...
Could I, could I just ask you, you're speaking, the microphone's hard to hear you.
In respect to the properties around there, you mentioned the betterments. So, how much are the betterments and what, what do you anticipate the expected funds would be from that?
We've worked the numbers backwards with the obvious, the 1.4 from commitment from Woodland Meadows. The schools are pitching in their fair share. We believe the number targeted for each housing unit, in other words, a house is a unit, a condominium is a unit, to be around 15,000, which you could stretch out over 20 years.
So, a homeowner would pay $15,000 to be tied into the sewer?
A homeowner would pay 15,000 for the access to the pipe in their front yard, then you'd have to hire a contractor to connect from your house to the sewer pipe.
Okay, is that typically about 10, 15,000 as well?
Each one is different, it's hard, it's hard for me to say. As you move back from the street, it's more expensive. If you're closer to the street, it's less money. Elevation, height above the street kind of plays into it, it's a whole, some, again, I'm an excavation contractor, I've done some for 3,000, I've done some for much more than that.
Okay, and then, does that include typically the cost of removing the septic tank and anything that would go along with that?
Thank you, exactly. Pump the tank, decommission the tank, sometimes there's interior plumbing that has to happen, but do what you have to do and then get the, get the pipe headed towards the street.
Okay, and is there a requirement to tie in as a homeowner?
Currently, I believe there's a five-year tie-in, so within five years after the project is complete.
Okay. So, holistically, anybody who would be along that route would look at about a $30,000 expense over a five-year timeframe and within five years of the project completion?
Not quite. 15 is the betterment fee that we're shooting for, and that can be stretched out over 20 years.
20 years.
And again, I think, I think 15 for a connection for an excavation contractor connection is kind of high. But again, it matters on each property. I'd have to, from what I know about the properties on West Main Street, they seem to be a little closer to the street. I think, I think those connections would be less than that. Let me put it this way, anybody who's done a septic system recently knows they're between 15 and 30,000 themselves, and that's your own maintenance, your own upgrading.
Yes, but there are also folks who have septic systems that don't need to be upgraded for quite some time. So, that's an, an unexpected cost, especially if you're a new resident in the area. I mean, I could, I could see really turning people away. So, and, and I have to agree with the gentleman earlier as well, I mean, that's a, a 27% miss on a budget is, is pretty questionable.
It's, it's not a tangible thing. Nobody has the x-ray vision to go down and see. When the, when the engineers put the pen to paper initially, there were three utilities that were not on anybody's plans. It's an old road. I can take the heat for it, but I'm, it's not, I guess in the car business, it would be a bait and switch. It's not, hey, let's, let's get everybody signed up for 3.3 and then come back for the million. At, at the time, the 3.3 was our best sincere engineer's estimate. There's no magic, there's no confusion, it's just nobody can have the x-ray vision. Again, I, I excavate all the time, and what's under the ground is unknown. And so, what they achieved by their test borings is an overall profile of the depth and location of these utilities and the boulders associated with the, at the depth of the sewer has to be. So, again, we hit 880 for the engineer's best estimate at this time.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Joe Massia, 21 Young Avenue. I was listening to this gentleman, but I had trouble understanding what actually he was saying. Now, please clarify, did I understand that you went somewhere and dug a hole in the road to put something in, and then you found there were utilities there that you didn't know about, and you had to dig a deeper hole, which cost more money? Is that what I understood?
Mr. Grant? It's kind of, we haven't, we've done test borings, we haven't dug the hole yet. The test borings showed that there were boulders at the elevation we need to be at to get around the other utilities that were not known about.
How could you not know about utilities?
They weren't on anybody's plan. You must know, you call DigSafe, you do some cross-checking, all the best plans that we have on file did not include these utilities. It's unfortunate.
Shocking, positively shocking.
Yes, sir?
Josh Hire, 1 Rendrick Drive. So, I just need some clarification on this Department of Housing money. Is that on top of what we approved last year, or is that going into what we approved last year? I'm just kind of confused about that.
That's a good question. Could you go back to the, I think it's funding?
I think you passed it already. It's the red number.
We had, there we go. Thank you, Steve. So, our initial design estimate, as everybody has hit, was 3.32, 3,320,000. That includes, at that time, we were still negotiating with the Housing Authority, because they are the main drivers of this. We have now got them to commit to 1.4 million dollars of that 4.2 million. So, the 4-2 is the whole number. Take out the 1.4 for the Housing Authority, take out some for the schools, take out some for the betterments, that's where we are.
Okay.
We need, we need to borrow 880 more.
Okay, so if we decide to not approve this, the Department of Housing is going to just have to figure it out for themselves on Woodland Meadows, is that what, that's what we're saying, right?
In a nutshell, they would, they would be building an onsite treatment plant, much like is at the middle school, and it's, it's really not what we need to do with a newly-improved sewer treatment facility in our town that we have relatively close sewer to.
Mr. Salvos, did you want to, Selectman Salvos?
You're Bob Salvos, Chairman of the Norton Housing Authority. The last 20 years, we have spent $4,000 a month in pumping additional $40,000 a year over the last 10 to 12 years because of degraded system. This is not something we're looking forward to putting in a wastewater treatment plant, but I'll tell you right now, if we don't hook up, the schools don't hook up, the businesses don't hook up, there's going to be some serious issues coming down the road.
Sure?
Just another clarification, so the Department of Housing money is coming from the state, it's not coming from us?
That's correct, and that's, that's a super motivator for us. The 1.4 needs to be used to solve the Woodland Meadows problem. They can, they can do it onsite, they can do it with us offsite. We strongly believe this is the best solution. This is permanent.
All right, just one more question. I was here last year, and I, I don't know if I'm confusing it with the money that the Department of Housing has offered, but we were told that, that there was some grant money that was going to be put forth if we voted on it now, or is that the same thing we're talking about?
We applied for a number of grants, and we were told that because there was no big commercial plaza, building, use, we didn't qualify. And again, I go back to the, if we build it, they will come. We don't have any, we have some commercial uses along that road, but to get to the point where you need it, we're not really set up like that. We don't have a mall here, you know what I mean? We have West Main Street, so we need to, we need the sewer to make it, our businesses more viable in that area.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Stefanelle?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ralph Stefanelle, 12 James Street, 17-year member of the Norton Housing Authority, and you just heard from Bob Salvos, who is our chairman, I happen to be co-chairman. If I can give you the quick elevator speech that might help you raise your hand to approve this project, it goes like this. You're sitting on a piece of property where your school is, it's wetlands. We have the town of Norton, which used to belong to Taunton. Norton is a swamp. School, we owned the land, we built the school. If you lived here long enough, you would know that we've had to repair those fields because of them being underwater. We then built the Housing Authority, those 144 apartments on wetlands. When you build a septic system on the wetlands, it has nowhere to go, it has nowhere to drain. We ran into problems, gigantic problems for the elderly. We approached DHCD, we approached HUD, we went for the federal money and the state money, so it wouldn't affect us on a Norton side. It will affect us because of the borrowing side of it, but then all of a sudden, their engineers were talking HUD, state, came in and worked out the engineering. We did not want a septic system on the property, period. We could not hook up to the middle school across from St. Mary's, it's too far, too costly. We had the problem, the high school had the problem, the Yale school had the problem. DHCD and HUD said, because we did this engineering, we allocated a million dollars, a million one, for the sewer system. We got them to lock it up for one year. We own that money, but if something happens in Chelsea or Lawrence, that money's gone. We don't own it, we only locked it up on the shelf. We then went back to them and got an additional $200,000 because we wanted to, to help the town of Norton and, and help your pocketbook. This is a project that now can become shovel-ready and will solve a lot of problems down the road. That's my story on how the money came about, and if you approve a bonding issue, a bonding issue of the 880, things happen very quickly. Luke, Mr. Grant spoke about July, he's right. This is on a fast track. I hope we keep it there with your vote of a yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Mr. Stefanelle. Yes, sir?
Hi, William Francis, 66 Plain Street. I just want to ask Mr. Grant, the, this financing that you said that these, that the residents would have on this side of the town, spread the cost out of connecting to the sewer over a 20-year period. First, does that apply to the residents also on Plain Street? Because I haven't heard of this yet.
Mr. Grant?
I, I have to limit the talk to this one, I'm not sure how the funding is on Plain Street. Each project is different, so this, this one has dynamic components of its own, as did that. We really have to just narrow the discussion to this, this topic. I can get you those answers, I just don't know them right now.
Because it certainly seems only fair that if a certain segment of town gets special financing, that everyone should get financing. If you don't...
Sir, I, I agree with you, but I'm going to have to limit the discussion right now to this specific project at this specific time.
Excellent, sir, thank you. I just wanted to add one piece of information also to the lady who was asking questions about the, the fees to connect to the sewer. Also, based upon experience that we have around Plain Street, which is only a handful of us, if you do not hook up to the sewer system, you'll be fined $100 a day. So, I want to make that also clear as part of the, part of the information on hooking up to the sewer system. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Hey, I'm Steve Hornsby, 251 West Main Street. I just had a little clarification question.
Could I, could I get you, sir, to speak right into that microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry. Steve Hornsby, 251 West Main Street. I have a clarification question here. As far as the increase in 27%, was this a new, was this a new report? A new engineering report that came out that increased this price?
Mr. Grant?
I'm gonna, I, I'll say this six times, as many times as is needed. We did test borings. I don't, I, you know, we discovered boulders at the depths we had to be, there were unknown utilities. It was a frustrating turn of events, but this is what's in the road. I guess something that I haven't mentioned before, that section of West Main Street is a state highway. Backfill has to be just about concrete, it's digable, flowable fill. The spec and type of pavement has to be better than your driveway, it's, it's a state road, so. And those, those topics were known about, but the, the things that drove the cost up were the borings that just, that showed us there were boulders at the depth we had to be. Ledge has to be blasted, split rocks removed, excavated with a hammer, and there were the other utilities that we had to go around. That, that's what drove the 880.
I apologize for having you repeat yourself, but my question was more geared towards what the... what the cost for the engineering report was initially. Initially, I'm sure you paid for an engineering report to get the first numbers for last year, correct?
Are you asking, sir, if there was an engineering report before the first article?
Correct. What I'm driving to here is, I'm sure a lot was paid to an engineer to give you the first numbers as far as, you know, what we were looking for last year and what caused it to increase. So, did they not do borings the first time, is what I'm getting at?
Right, no. No borings the first time. This is somewhat common practice until you're shovel-ready. You need to propose a project and fund a project, otherwise there's no money to do the borings. It's a whole catch-22, so...
No, I understand how that works. I'm saying, is there an engineering report prior to that?
The engineer's estimate is the 3.32 that you saw before. That was our initial estimate, without any borings.
Okay. So, all right, I think you're missing the question. You initially paid for an engineering report with no borings, is what you said, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Do we have any idea how much we paid the engineering company that did this?
I don't have those numbers. I don't, I mean, they do profile, well, I don't understand what you're getting at. I'm sure there were fees paid to engineers for a plan.
I think what you're asking, sir, is, in essence, a breakdown of last year's article, of how much was spent on an engineering fee for the article that was voted on last year. Is that basically what you're asking?
Well, you know, I'm just trying to drive in the point that, you know, I completely understand that you're going to find things unexpected, costs go up, it happens all the time. I'm just concerned at how much was paid to the engineer that was off the mark by 27%. So I don't have any further questions.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Tracy Wise, 56 Crane Street. I would just like to ask this town to be forward-thinking. It seems like we keep wanting to Band-Aid our problems. This, I've been to many of these meetings hearing about this. It sounds like what we need to do, and if we don't make this go forward, we're going to have big problems in the future, like we're already starting to have in other areas of our town. And I would make a motion that we stop discussion and make a vote.
Okay, I cannot allow a motion to move the question after you've spoken to an article, so therefore, your motion is out of order, and I cannot accept it. But I have a feeling that it's not going to go for not. Dave?
Dave Heaney, 25 Fletcher Way. Mr. Moderator, I move the question?
I'm shocked. We have a motion to move the question. A motion to move the question is a motion to end debate. If you vote in favor of the motion to move the question, then we will end debate, and we will proceed to a vote on the motion before us. If you vote no and defeat the motion to move the question, then that will continue debate, and we will continue discussing the article under consideration. Does everybody understand a yes means we stop debate, a no means we keep debating? Everybody clear on that? All those in favor of moving the question, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the vote is unanimous, the motion is passed, the question is moved. We now go to the vote on Article 5 for the $880,000. This requires borrowing on the part of the town. It requires a two-thirds vote to pass. The moderator does have the discretion of determining that. If I am unsure, then we will take a standing vote. All those in favor of Article 5, please indicate by raising your hand.
Article 8.
Article 8, I'm in the wrong meeting. All those in favor, I'm going to start again, so put your hands down just so I get it right. All those in favor of Article 8 of the special town meeting, please indicate by raising your hand. All those opposed, Article 8 passes by a two-thirds majority vote, as declared by the moderator. Are there any other business, any other business? I guess I'm done. I hereby declare the special town meeting to be adjourned. We will now reopen the annual town meeting. Where I had a microphone? Yes? I'm sorry. Yeah, I know, I can't hear me either. Now I can hear me. I have declared the special town meeting to be adjourned. I have ordered the reopening of the annual town meeting back to Article 5, where Mr. Kimball was about to address us on the town hall, and the lady over here will be recognized right after that to continue your question. Yes, you can go to the microphone. Mr. Kimball?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'd like to ask a question for you. First of all, the town hall that we're presently using was built back in the, I believe, in the 40s and 50s. It is part of the College of the Pine, which was a college across the street from where the town hall is today. Originally, it was a gymnasium. If you go into the basement of the building, you'll find old gym lockers down there, you'll find showers, you'll find a lot of areas that we cannot allow the public to go into because it's in such bad, bad repair. Answer your question about the paint job. I was the foreman on that paint job. I had the responsibility of getting the paint donated to the town, which I did, and through the cooperation of the Sheriff's Department, we were able to paint the outside of the building. We didn't do anything else to it. We put a Band-Aid on it, that's all we did. We just painted it. The inside of the building, we did the same thing five years prior to that. We were in there, again, I arranged for a donation of paint. We had the sheriff, female and male residents where it came in and helped us paint the inside of the facility. We haven't put five cents into that building since 1978. The only thing we've done to improve it is we replaced the carpeting two or three years ago. Unfortunately, we didn't do it in the selectmen's meeting room, but the rest of the building has been completed. Other than that, we've been putting Band-Aids on this facility for many, many years. We haven't done anything to improve it. The HVAC unit on the roof is still the original unit that was built, when it was built. We've done some repairs on the roof, as needed. But getting back to the Yale or any other school, I believe that the town has done a very, very good job in past years of supporting the school system and keeping, and updating those buildings and keeping as modern as we possibly can, Yale being one of the older ones in town. But we've spent a lot of money doing it, and the town's been very supportive of that. The reason we're asking for a new town hall is because the one we have, number one, in 1978, didn't even get an occupancy permit because it wasn't quite ready. Never has had one. We've never had an occupancy permit on the building. If anyone wants to take a tour of the building, I'm volunteering, I would be glad to show you. There are some areas I can't take you into, but there are areas that I'd be more than happy to take anyone down into the basement. We call the selectmen's office, make an arrangement, I'd be more than glad to get down and show you what we're talking about. The first and second floor is pretty dated, pretty much worn out. If you want to see something a real mess, again, I can show you some of the areas where the old police department used to be, dispatcher used to be in the basement, the air quality in the basement, and some of the other issues that apply to that building. My final comment on this is, the 1.5 million dollars was raised by the selectmen and town meeting through an alum, which we were very pleased to have come to our community as a new commercial partner. And that 1.5 million dollars was raised through fees, the building fees. We thought it was more than appropriate to take that money and utilize it to look at two of our oldest buildings, and by the way, we haven't talked about the COA building yet, Council on Aging Building, which used to be a firehouse. Prior to that, it was a schoolhouse, I believe, maybe back in Mr. Gaver's day. But it was a two-room schoolhouse, and then became a firehouse, and later was converted to COA. Anyone who wants to go there, I'm sure there are plenty of people on the Council on Aging that would be more than happy to give you a tour of that facility also, where they're wall-to-wall and they're shoulder-to-shoulder anytime they have an event. So, we don't take this lightly. We understand that there's some financial complications in the town right now. We get it, we understand it. But we also understand we have to be progressive and start moving forward. We've been putting Band-Aids on these buildings for way too many years, and we need to start getting proactive and trying to figure out a way to do it. More than likely, we won't be able to finance these projects through under Prop 2.5, which means that it won't have an impact on the budget process, but in the future, it could have a major impact on additional taxes for us senior citizens to have to pay the additional funds through taxation. But I do believe it's the right thing to do. I hopefully answered your question.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to request or ask if we could shelve this whole thing until we get our finances in order. I think this town financially is in big trouble. I don't see the need for a senior center and a new town hall, when I just went to the school committee meeting, and they're talking big layoffs for teachers, the whole school lunch program is going to be revamped, and especially, there's going to be fourth graders riding the bus with eighth graders. All of this and the bus fees are probably going to go...
Ma'am, could I ask that we restrict the discussion right now to the feasibility study or town hall, please?
Given, I'll repeat myself in this way, given the financial situation of this town, I'm asking that we shelve this project for now.
Mr. Moderator? I didn't hear a motion on that, so I'm just going to assume that you mean you want people to defeat it. Mr. Kimball?
Yeah, the, you know, the purpose of the feasibility study is to determine whether or not, first of all, I think I'm realistic enough to know that we're not going to be talking about putting this under Prop 2.5. It's just not going to happen. It's going to be a dead exclusion. That'll be a decision that we'll all have to make later on. What we're asking this town meeting to do is to give us the opportunity, as we will talk about a couple of items ahead of us, we did a feasibility study to determine if we needed windows and doors in the schools. You have to do that, as part of the process. And all we're asking you to do is allow us the opportunity to go into these two buildings, see what we're working with now, figure out a way that we can build something that would be suitable for the seniors. You know, during the last hurricanes, we had problems where we had no place to send people. No one knew where to go if they lost their power. I don't know about you guys, but I lost mine for three and a half days. And it would be nice to know that we have a school, or a town hall, or a Council on Aging building that can handle that type of emergency, where we don't have to ask, we know exactly where to go. That's one aspect of what I, the reason I would like to look at it, and I think it's important that we continue to do it. And I would ask that you support this article. The money's already been appropriated, we figured out a way to raise the money, we didn't ask the taxpayers to help us with it, we got creative in our financing. It's no different than school choice. You've got $500,000, $600,000 a year that goes to the school committee, they can decide how they want to spend it. We're asking for the same consideration. We want the opportunity to use this money, which has already been appropriated, by the way, at a previous town meeting, just to look at what we have and what we need and determine from there. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, I just want to make sure that we understand that the motion is to transfer, and correct me, Mr. Fincomb, Chairman, if I make a mistake, but the motion is to transfer $135,000 from the funds that were already appropriated under Article 12 of the October 23, 2017 meeting. So this is not raising and appropriating new money. It's taking money that was already voted under an article for the town meeting and transferring it to be used for the feasibility study. So I just want to make sure that everybody understands that part of it. Everybody understand that?
That is correct.
Okay. Is there any discussion, further discussion on Article 5? Peter?
Peter J. Wiggins, 157 Mansfield Ave., trailer 43 in Norton, Mass. And I agree with our town manager units, and Mr. Kimball said, it is time that we need a new town hall. And I know the town employees very well, and I hear that they are complaining about the old tunnel, and it's time we need a new town hall, because I've been there numerous times. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Any further discussion on Article 5? Seeing no hands, we will move, we will move to the vote. We will move to the vote. All those in favor of Article 5, please indicate by raising your hands. All those opposed, Article 5 passes by a majority vote, as declared by the moderator. Article 6?
Mr. Moderator, I move, as written in the warrant, that the town vote to transfer in the amount of $65,000 from the funds appropriated under Article 12 of the October 23, 2017 town meeting for the cost of engineering and design of a new senior center for a feasibility study for such purposes, and further to authorize the Board of Selectmen to take such actions and execute such documents and agreements as are necessary to effectuate the purpose of this article, including contracts with terms in excess of three years. Mr. Moderator?
Chairman?
This is a similar article as the one previous before us in Article 5. It's focusing on the senior center and the amount of $65,000 that has already been appropriated from October 23, 2017.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, this is basically the same as the article before it, except you substitute $65,000 instead of $135,000, and you substitute senior citizen center for town hall. It's an article to do the feasibility study on that. The funding source is the same as the previous article, coming from the money voted in October of 2017. Everybody clear on that, right? Yes, ma'am?
I'm Patricia Swicker, 9 Clap Street. I serve on the Council of Aging Board, and I encourage everyone to vote for this. We presently have 4,176 seniors in the town of Norton, 20% of the population. The senior center right now was a one-room schoolhouse built in the 1800s. We presently have absolutely no room to service the seniors in this town. Many days, we have 90 to 100 people coming through that center for various events, fuel assistance, human services, and it's just totally inadequate. We turn people away all the time because there is just simply not enough room to service them. And we do not only service seniors in that building, we service all residents of the town who need assistance. We have outreach person, a part-time, we only have one full-time employee, the director. She is also the human services director. So there is a lot of need for another building that can adequately serve all of the citizens of Norton, and I urge you to please vote for this.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion or questions on Article 6? Yes, sir.
Hi, Joe Massey, I just want to make a comment. You're looking for a senior center to host more people. I've been down there, I really don't see that many folks down there. There's enough, but if you keep raising taxes with these overrides, I can assure you, there won't be any of us left living here to go to the new place. Yeah, two of them since I moved here. Just what I want to say, if you keep raising taxes, there ain't going to be no old people here for the civil center.
Yes, ma'am.
Maureen Strzozinski, 283 East Main Street. And I raised this at the town meeting, and again, I'd like to reiterate what the moderator said, this funding has already been appropriated. We're just asking, they're just asking to transfer this money so we can move ahead with the feasibility study. And the measure of the town is the quality of education and support it provides to its students, and the quality and support it provides to the aging population. So let's not pit the two against each other, but try to think about how we do this.
Yes, ma'am.
Dino O'Brien, 6 Avery Road. I'd like to point out, first of all, that I am a senior. I have been to the senior center. I have been to the town hall. I have had the good fortune to go to many of the schools with great nieces and my children. And I believe firmly that the infrastructure needs of the town of Norton have to be addressed evenly across the board. If I, in the next 10 to 15 years, decide to sell my home, the lack of support for the infrastructure in this town is going to severely impact the amount of money that I can receive on my investment. Therefore, not only impacting the taxes that I pay out now, but whatever profit I might make to go into assisted living, God forbid, move in with my children, or find someplace else to go. So I agree with what's been said here. We need to look at our infrastructure across the board, not be penny wise and pound foolish. And no, I don't want to pay any more taxes. But as I voted for all the school increases throughout the years, I will continue to vote for what is best of the town of Norton. Thank you.
Any other discussion on Article 6? Peter?
Peter J. Wiggins, 157 Mansfield Ave., Trailer 43. And I agree with what Mrs. Zwicker said, it is time for a new senior center because I know the seniors very well, and they deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article 6? Seeing no hands, all those in favor of Article 6, please indicate by raising your hands. All those opposed, Article 6 passes by majority vote as declared by the moderator. Articles, Article 7.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Chairman.
I move, I move as written. Hello? I move as written that the town vote to appropriate the amount of $8 million-
Right.
Yep. Is that any better?
I'll tell you, your microphone, okay, let's try it one more time.
Yep, sure. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate-
Okay, hold on, hold on. The chairman of finance here is trying to move it, but the microphone isn't working, so I'm going to read the motion, uh, which is-
I can read, I can-
Okay, that's fine. Can I ask?
All right. I'll stay up here for tonight.
Wait a minute. Is the, is the motion as printed in the warrant, or is there a difference?
Uh, no, it's as written.
Well, then, we just saved a whole bunch of time. Because, ladies and gentlemen, the motion is as written in your warrant.
Written in the warrant.
So the, the figure is $8,476,971?
That's correct, uh, Mr. Moderator. This is a school building project, primarily doors and windows for the Norris, the Solmanes, and the Yell School. The total, uh, amount of this project is $8,476,971. However, there's a project reimbursement from the Mass School Billing Authority of 55.63%, which will equal, I was just informed, I do have to read the article.
Well, so much for that idea. Let's just read the article and get it over with.
Okay. Okay. Uh, Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate the amount of $8,476,971 for the collaboration with the Mass School Building Authority in conducting a potential window door replacement project at the Norton Elementary Schools, specifically the Henry A. Yell Elementary School located at 64 West Main Street, the J.C. Solmane's Elementary School located at 315 West Main Street, and the L.G. Norris Elementary School at 38 Plain Street, which proposed repair projects would materially extend the useful life of the school and preserve an asset that otherwise is capable of supporting the required educational programs. Said some to be expended on the direction of the school building committee and to meet in appropriation. The treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectment, is authorized to borrow said self under Mass General Law, Chapter 44, or any other enabling authority that the town of Norton acknowledges. That the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA, and any project cost the town incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the town, provided further that any grant that the town may receive the MSBA for the project shall not exceed the lesser of 55.63% of eligible approved project costs as determined by the MSBA, or the total maximum grant amounts determined by the MSBA, and the amount of borrowing authorized pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth, the project funding agreement that may be executed between the town of Norton and the MSBA. In short, this is a program that allows a school, buildings that the three schools mentioned, to become much more energy efficient. It's going to add, um, a window and door project where there'll be glass that will be, uh, safety glass as well for security reasons. And, uh, this project, although it's $8,476,971, um, the reimbursement amount will be $4,715,739 from the MSBA. So the town's projected share cost is $3,761,232.
Ladies and gentlemen, this, this vote will require bonding and borrowing, so it will require a two-thirds majority vote for passage. Did you want to say something else?
Uh, no, that's it.
Okay. Yes, sir. Reverend?
Yeah, Paul Wanamaker, 217 Taunton Avenue. I'd like to ask the school superintendent if you could give us some very specific numbers on enrollment. My understanding is that enrollment has been decreasing in the schools. That's one question. Uh, consequently with that, in regards to these buildings, could you tell us specifically the, the usage of, the percentage uses of these buildings? In a line with that, is it considered the possibility of perhaps taking one of those buildings and put it to other use? Maybe have two elementary schools, and maybe the, the third, perhaps the one closest to the center of town, could be used for more, uh, town functions? If you could give us some specifics on those, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening to the town meeting members. Joe Byder, Superintendent of Schools. To the previous speaker, we've had, seen significant decline in enrollment till about two years ago where our enrollment slowed down, and we're off, supposed to topple off according to MSBA projections. If you look back, for example, just earlier today, I did this, if you look back at our projected numbers of 2008, let's say, of about 3,000 students, we are currently at 2,473 students, another 90 students of school choice, and then we have a Reed-Stephan Hyde hearing program that's with us. To your second question, as it pertains to classroom space that is being used, except for the nine classrooms throughout the district that go with Reed's, we then have two classrooms at the JCS that are currently vacant, if you will, that are used for other space within internally. But in general, our buildings are at 90% capacity or more. There's been this constant question about enrollment that I find interesting. Folks, one of the number one things that we've done, and you've actually approved it tonight, is the potential to keep our special education student, students in this district. Since I've been here, I've opened up six different classrooms in the district for special education services, thereby bringing the total actual year-to-year cost down. And that continues to be a, a area that we're working on. This year, unfortunately for us, we also saw a kick up in the, wow, a increase in out-of-district. Since the Education IDEA in 1971, we have a responsibility to develop programs internally. So you may be seeing spaces, when you went to school in the 80s and 90s or earlier, that are now actually classroom spaces used for three to five students, instead of putting students on a bus and sending them to another community at a significantly higher increase. You'll see later in my presentation that we have nine students in our district that cost between $130,000 and $250,000 each to educate out-of-district. And one of my goals has been how to bring some of these students back or keep them in this district. In 2014, when, or 13, when I started here, we had 60 students out-of-district. As of last year, we had 44, and then this year, we've seen an uptick and an increase to 44, or 38 to 44, I should say. As it pertains to the day-to-day operations of the schools, I feel pretty comfortable having you more than come and visit the schools with me and take a look at how many empty spaces we have and how they're used or not utilized throughout the district. Lastly, we undertook, per the request of this Board of Selectment, a year and a half ago, a internal study consisting of folks in this audience, teachers, educators in general, my office, my support staff, and citizens of the town, to look at how could we potentially, per the request of the Board of Selectment, shut down the Yell Elementary School. We did that. We took a look at what the enrollment would mean. I would have to move 30 students into the elementary classrooms at this point in time of enrollment in order to be able to do that. Educationally, I don't think that's a good decision this day and age of teaching all students and meeting the needs of all students by placing 30 students in an elementary classroom. That's what we would have to do, part one. Part two that we would have to do is we would have to move the fifth grade entirely to the middle school. The middle school is not built as a junior high school. It's made of literally three, it's made of six pods, one on each side, two per floor. And then the far wing is for your STEM area, your arts and your music. They're not traditional classrooms, per se. So when we looked at it all, we said at this time, a year and a half ago, to the Board of Selectment, to this body, to the school committee, printed all over the place, that we weren't at an enrollment where closing down the school should take place. And I'll add one more part to the prior speaker's question. If the recommendation came to my office to close the school, it would not be the Yell Elementary School. Because the Yell Elementary School has a long-term feasibility for the town. I can bill to the side of it and behind it. I can't do that at any of my two other elementary schools. So if I have to think that I'm going to be here 10 years from now, or 20 years from now, or till tomorrow morning, I think I have a responsibility to the school committee to provide them with information that says, if you're going to close the school, it wouldn't be that one of the two schools, of the three schools.
Could I just ask one more thing? In past sessions, in particular in this last attempt at a two-and-a-half override, which was voted down, somehow you found a million dollars that you were asking us to pay you.
I'm going to, I, I let the first part go because I understand that space has to do with it. But I'm going to restrict the discussion, I am going to restrict the discussion to the question at hand, and that's whether we want to spend this money on this purpose. So please, let's stick to that question.
Well, I think it is pertinent to it.
I think it isn't, so we're going to not talk about it.
Mr. Moderator, I am more than willing to answer that question directly.
That's nice of you, but you're not going to.
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, through you, I just think that fact should be part of this body's decision-making. And this is the second town meeting where the previous speaker has made a comment about the trust and honesty of the school committee and the so-called million dollars.
Okay, and now, let's stop there, let's stop there, let's stop there. As long as I'm running this meeting, we're going to talk about the, the thing being talked about right here in the article, and if people want to moan and groan and go after each other on political reasons, they can do it like I do, after the meeting. Now, let's go and keep doing on this article. Are there any other questions or comments on this article?
We have a brief presentation.
Very good. We're going to have a brief presentation. And then we'll go to Mr. Kimball.
Okay. Sorry, Mr. Kimball. Mr. Moderator, through you, in February of 17, 2017, both the Norton School Committee and the Board of Selectment supported a statement of interest to the MSBA. ADA accelerated program, uh, projects were received by the MSBA. In the spring of 17, they visited, meaning the MSBA visited them with their specialty folks. You were selected as one of 13 communities that the windows and the exit doors were considered to be in need of significant repair. So you were one of 13 communities that has received the potential to go forward. Tonight, I ask that you consider this article. Our owner project manager, as appointed by, by the MSBA, is Don Veloso, who's here from ACG. And, Mr. Moderator, through you, I'd like to turn the floor over to him for a brief presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Again, I'm Don Veloso from Architectural Consulting Group, and to give you some details about your window project up for consideration. MSBA funds this project. You've already heard in your article that it's 55.63%. We're going to be doing windows and doors in three of your schools included in the project. Because the value of the project is over $100,000, code requires us to look at ADA upgrades. Those ADA upgrades are bathroom renovations and water fountains, and that's to comply with MAB and 521 CMR. Also, the, because we're doing doors, you'll have accessible entrances. If I can turn it over to Bill Sylvia from T2 Architecture, he'll give you some more details about the actual windows and doors planned.
Thank you. And ladies and gentlemen, in case you're wondering, these people have direct information that, that applies to it, and so the moderator is allowing them to speak even though they are non-residents.
I can't hear what you're saying. I keep cutting it out.
I was just saying that these people are non-resident, these people are non-residents, but the moderator is allowing them to speak because they have information that is important to the subject at hand. And anybody wants to make a motion to get new microphones, I will definitely recognize you. I want you to-
We're moving forward.
Yes, sir. Also, okay, great. Hello, everyone. My name is Bill Sylvia from T2 Architects. Before I get started, I just want to let you know, we're going to be walking you through photos of the existing conditions of the windows and doors, and some masonry repairs located around the windows themselves, and then some of the ADA upgrades in each of the schools. Okay, so for the first slide, this is just to show the deteriorated sealants to the point that it no longer resists stormwater intrusion into the building. The next slide here is a photo of a window at the Solmane's School. And the upper arrow showing the sealants being applied over the leading edge of a lintel and actually blocking the moisture drainage. Typically, there's a weep hole that's being clogged by the sealant, so they were improperly applied. Also, the existing windows at Solmane's, the original windows, they're roughly 46 years old. The school was built in 1976, 41 years old, whatever. So you can see that there's also some failing gaskets at the glass in the, in the window frame, just pulling out. That also creates water to enter into the building. The next slide here is a photograph of a rusted lintel, which is typical through for several Solmane's and Yell. This is a photo from Yell of the upper windows, showing that. The next slide is also at Yell, at the 54 addition, one of the wings, and this is kind of typical throughout those windows at the one-story addition, is the insulated glass has fogged up due to moisture entering the glass through failed ceilings, sealants.
Yes. Yeah, so if you could, I know it's hard to turn and watch that and then speak directly into that microphone, but if I have to do it, you have to do it. So if you could just try to- So if you could just try to speak, almost swallow that thing, it would certainly help us.
Okay. All right, the next photo is another slide of a window condition at Solmane's, and this is to show that the water is entering in through these windows and creating damage to the adjacent materials such as the sills and the gypsum returns at the jams. The next photo showing the existing glass block enter, windows at Yale with unsuccessful glass block repairs and some painting of the existing block. Now if we can go forward to the doors, this is typical throughout all three schools. Frames are thermally not broken, and doors are not insulated. Thresholds, conditions vary widely, from tight with reasonable weather stripping to large gaps with ineffective weather stripping. At Yale, there are existing wood doors with non-insulated glass, and some steel doors and frames corroded. The next slide shows some localized areas of deterioration and cracking of masonry caused by water infiltration at the window sills. This photo's taken at, at Yale. Some other masonry concerns are the control joints, sealants have eroded, exposing underlying backer rod and allowing stormwater to enter the wall assembly. This one picture is taken from Solmane's. Again, some more masonry concerns at Solmane's, the sealants have been applied over eroded mortar joints, a little repointing. This traps moisture within the underlying mortar and accelerates its deterioration. At Solmane's, there's erosion of mortar below the windows due to the sloped masonry sills and exposure to concentrated runoff from the window itself. The next slide here is existing conditions for ADA code compliant. So the three, we show three of the toilet room locations and renovations that are required by code. So we reconfigure and renovate existing toilet rooms to code compliant unisex toilet room for each school. We would provide high-energy efficiency water-conserving plumbing fixtures, typical for all three schools, and replace one existing drinking fountain with a new dual-height fountain at each school. The next slide shows the Yale main entrance, which needs to be reconfigured to be code compliant. It right, it measures at five foot four deep, we have to get it to seven feet, as you can see in the slide on the left. The slide in the center is a optional vestibule to be created at the bus drop-off at Solmane's. And the vestibule at Norris create a energy-efficient compliant, yes, energy-compliant vestibule at Norris main entrance, and that's optional as well.
Yeah, speak a little louder, sir.
Okay. So, proposed scope, we would replace deteriorated aluminum windows with new super U-factor performance windows. We would create, we would install school guard glass at first floors only at all schools. Install high-performance insulated translucent fiberglass panels at high windows and gym at Norris and Yale schools. Replace all window shades at all schools. Replace all envelope sealants, including control joints. Cut and point areas of proactive deteriorated mortar. Replace cracked or broken bricks and repoint. Clean and paint rusted steel lintels. We would also full replacement of thermally improved doors and frames. Replace lobby storefront systems at Yale and Norris main entrance. Repair damaged asphalt concrete foundations at Yale and Norris schools, add accessible unisex toilet rooms, and dual water fountains at each school. Maintain existing security at doors with the addition of a second door opener in vestibules at all three schools. Maintain window air conditioners. Provide one infill panel at all classrooms to accommodate future air conditioners at all three class, at all three schools. Repair and replace mortar at sloped masonry sill at Yale School. And the next slide here is removal of asbestos and assumed polychlorinated bifenols containing caulking and sealant, which is PCBs. Disposal of ACM and PCB waste and removal and disposal will be in strict compliance with the EPA and MA, the EP regulations. So the next slide here, Don, you want to speak, Don's gonna speak to the school guard
So when we started this project, everybody's familiar with what we've seen in the news, what happens in schools. So immediately upon that, we got requests for upgraded glazings in schools to try to keep people out that we don't want in the school. And one of the options that we've incorporated into this project is school guard glass. And what, I'll give, show you a videotape of what school guard glass is. So that's just a demonstration of what school guard glass is. It's, it's something new, but it's something that I, I think parents that we've spoken to, they think it's a good thing to have. It keeps people out of the school. It gives time for occupants of the school to escape out another door, allow, allows time for the police to arrive. And this is one, this particular type of glazing is specified for your project on the first floor, first floor windows. The project cost, as, as, has been stated in your article, is eight million, four hundred and seventy-six thousand, nine hundred and seventy-one dollars. Here to answer some questions, if the moderator would like me to.
Anybody else feel bad for that guy with the bat? Yes, sir?
Timothy Griffin, 169 John Scott Boulevard. With all of these upgrades and energy efficiencies, is there a estimated annual energy savings from this project?
No, there is not. We've, the project is being built to the Energy Stretch Code. We have not done, we have not done a study that would give us all those figures on how much money we'd save. Try this again. I can talk loud. I'll talk loud and I'll speak up. It wasn't part of our study to study all aspects of the energy in the school. There's all different systems, insulation in the roof, and boilers, heating system. So that was not part of our, the scope of our study. However, the windows will be, and the, and doors will be the highest energy-efficient windows that we can buy for your school now.
Yes, sir.
What is the additional cost of adding school guard glass and school protection glass?
We estimate it with the school guard glass, but Bill, I mean, that, that number escapes me. Was it ten, ten or fifteen percent more for the glazing?
Any other questions or comments? Yes, sir?
John Thurlow, eighty-nine Bird Street. We've seen a total project cost here of eight point four. Do we have a breakdown by site of what each school is gonna cost?
Can you grab me that for you? Just grab me, Mike.
And as a follow-up to that, assuming this is approved, what's the construction schedule gonna be like to minimize the impact on the school year?
All right.